Alright, ready? All ordered, adoption of agenda.
Move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Can I get a second there? Any discussion? All in favor? Adoption of minutes?
That council adopt the minutes for the special council meeting budget held on February the 5th, 2019.
Can I get a second there?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Delegation?
Recommendation that council hear the delegation from the Pus Groupie Museum Board. And the bracket council request that the museum board come to meeting.
Second. Any discussion before we start? No? Hey Joe, come on up.
Just as simple as that, eh?
Yeah.
Here on.
Here on.
I believe that required reading before.
Excuse me?
I didn't bring any character.
No? That's not good.
Ow.
That's cute.
Mark's got hers.
Candy Donuts.
I just passed it on.
That one feels like two.
I guess we're sharing.
I gave Chris one.
I passed it down.
Oh.
Well, I'm keeping yours, keep notes.
Okay.
You need this one to read? Nope. I need the glasses.
Did you remember them?
It's just kind of a little review of what we do and why we do it and how we've done it for a better number of years, actually. Now, we used to come in here and give you folks a little rundown, but I think it's been like three years since we did that. Normally it was by request, so we haven't been requested till we didn't do it. Or didn't have to. I think we worked a lot closer this last few years, so it probably wasn't felt to be as necessary as it maybe used to be. Anyhow, this overview is a look at our past activity, some financial status. As it pertains to the budget requirements placed before council in mid-February. And the budgets are... The budget requirements as presented for today. Today operation of the museum with a small percentage provides heat and required small office expenses. The cost for financial help with various functions show up as budgetary line items, but as you can see, they're minimal. Our main costs are wages over there. Their wage levels are controlled, but we're always feeling upward pressure on them every year. Because we're in competition with the people that you folks hire that work across the street. They're sitting there twenty dollars an hour, whatever figure, and we're trying to stay down. You know, so we get a little pressure every year to try and match that, so that's brought our requirements up a little bit, will be tried to keep a number controlled. You know, I'm speaking to the firemen a lot, everybody knows a lot of this stuff, but our group is made up of volunteers. With a required number of directors as required by the societies act and spelled out in our constitution. And that includes one representative from the village council. Our membership is made up mainly of older folks. As volunteerism seems to be a hard sell these days. But the group as it stands is very supportive and we seem to carry on. Over the course of a year, these people log a huge amount, donated time, and it is significant. And they help make the success of the functions and projects which we initiate and otherwise help with. A list of them and it's extensive of what the museum's involved in over the course of a year. Our grand opening, which includes a grad sale pancake breakfast takes balance energy from those folks cluttered together. You know, it's a big deal and it takes a lot of time and it...
Everybody looks forward to it. Everybody looks forward to it.
Everybody looks forward to it, but it doesn't come without a cost. These people really put a lot of time into it. You know, and going chronologically kind of as this goes in the same John that they never gonna be. Through the remit or the school year, we always have a few tours come through. All takes time, all takes effort, you know, to get that together and to help. Never seems to be enough with a few people that we have at the museum for staff. So there's always a volunteer who comes around to help that long, you know? July 1st celebrations, a parade, you know, all that stuff, harvest tea, Simon auction, bake sale, all donated stuff, you know, these people, there's nickel and dime stuff in there constantly. We put a parade, put a float in the Dawson Creek Parade. Our light up comes along and our light up activities, Christmas display, parade, hayrides, we serve coffee, got chocolate, donuts, food bank. Help from the village in that respect. But the cleanup and the mess is something that, you know, is on our shoulders to look after and then we gladly do it. We have a lot of things that go unnoticed that we've done over the years. And we've contributed through our fundraising efforts, you know, to promote heritage efforts in our town, you know, like the walking tour and the plaques and the benches and signings. Last year, we funded the new room in Heritage House. Was there all the time, so, but it's a new room in the sense that it was useless space before.
So can I stop you there, Joe? Is the Heritage House part of an entity of the village?
No.
No, that's...
No, it belongs... Oh, well, it's not an entity in the museum, it's an entity of the village. There's nothing over there that belongs to the museum except like the booths.
Right, so I see here you got new room for Heritage House, how come the village didn't pay for any of the room?
How come somebody didn't go over and say, "Hey, we can pay for that"?
Because it'll be robbed towards the end, right?
Yeah.
The same with here, the security fence and display. Why was the village...
Years ago and we weren't on the village's Christmas list back in those days.
But you are mine.
And, well, but my point is that we weren't comfortable with getting money from the village back in those days because every nickel that we got, we had to re-fight for. So our fundraising efforts were targeted for different things, you know, and that was one of them, you know, in the day. That's what was, I'd say, you know, many years ago, I can't remember. Don't ask me to remember that, you know, yesterday. Wall of Fame, you know, it's stuff that we do. The new displays and storage building, that sort of thing. You folks paid for half that storage building, we paid for the other half. But these donations, nickel and dime from all these people donating their time to the multiple functions that we do, you know? Sidewalks, we put sidewalks in. We put some storage area, some display area, I don't know, it's concrete now, paid for by us. Not begrudgingly paid for by us, I mean, it goes to our means. Paid for it because we needed it, wanted it, we did it.
But that's where we need to set the boundaries, like the line is, that is a village entity, the village is responsible for those things. Not you guys. We are responsible. So the buildings, all that, we are responsible for the contractors, we are responsible for anything that needs to be done over there.
Well, you know, I can buy into that. But one has to keep in mind that we fire up in the first meeting, we shut down in September. And we don't have time to go through process.
No, but if we do a budget now, so that we know what you guys are gonna be doing and what projects you guys need to be done, and does the village have to pay for it? Right, if it has to be a shed or sidewalks or whatever, does the village pay for it? Or are you guys gonna go off with the money? Should we help you guys? That's what we are calling you guys here for tonight, the budget.
I'm perfectly aligned with that, I really, I accept that, I think that's the way it should be. Lots of times, our decisions are made because somebody comes up with an idea at a meeting. And we know we're time sensitive because we're gonna be done in September. So someone comes up with an idea and we allocate some funds to it. If it's an idea and everybody's in consensus, you know? So, yes, there's things that you folks should pay for. But that would take super organization on our part.
Can't Chris send us... You send Chris an email and then you send it to us and we say yes.
It would take super organization.
We have a rep, yeah?
Yes.
No, no, and we're cool with that, I understand that that's the way it should be. But don't put the bar too high. Because we're looking at a bunch of volunteers that come in, are done go to get something done. And maybe don't have the time to do the due process, you know, that you folks require in order to get it through your system. We accept that. Maybe it should, at a later time, maybe if we find a worthwhile project and we do it, maybe we should be able to come back, you... To recover funding if it's acceptable.
Can we have a contingency fund set up there for them, in case that...
We already do have a contingency fund, well, we did last year, we had that paint money, right?
So, yes, you know, and I know that we can do a little better in that regard, but don't put the bar too high because I don't think, I don't think we'll get there.
I don't expect you guys to do any more than what you wanna do, but I just want everybody to know that the village is responsible for certain items, right? And you guys shouldn't be working your butts off trying to pay it for. It's great that people are donating to the museum, that's great. And it's great that we have all these things, but it's not the museum's responsibility to have to pay for this stuff.
Well, okay, okay, I mean, I can accept that. We'll very well see how this whole thing will go easier. Bring it on.
Bring it on.
Okay, so you got the list and stuff there and everybody had a chance to read it. We do a lot of things, I mean, nobody can deny, you know, what we do. So, you know, we got a unique position in that we operate and occupy and we operate from village's own property and buildings. While we possess stewardship for the artifacts. Very unique in the sense that we're married to you folks, you know, in a sense.
But we don't force.
That, well, I don't think anybody's ever even thought in that direction. What I'm pointing out is that we have to work together.
That's right.
And so, anyhow, we've kind of, you know, a lot of this stuff is just obvious stuff, but, you know, we represent the face of tourism in the village and constantly we try to improve on that. As a society, we've entrusted with some very interesting and praised collection of artifacts. And we attempt to present in a pleasing and informative manner. That part of my discussion here is totally directed at the curator and the staff, and they do a good job. It changes every year, but every year, some new people come in and their ideas are fresh and we get a new perspective, you know, and it carries on. The grounds are kept in excellent condition. Everyone's gotten many, many kudos for the followers and the care. Anyhow, our financial approach in this is kind of... We're kind of chasing awards here. You know, we've got a president, a vice president, secretary of treasury, to which the curator is accountable. And to whom, you know, he can approach us anytime as needed for help or direction. The only thing in our system that isn't perfectly controlled monetarily is the small discretionary allowance we allow the curator in case he has to go get something. He doesn't have to run and get a check signed for a twenty dollar item. So he's got a small discretionary level that we think that we, that's went through meetings, we've okayed. And that's the only thing that isn't controlled through our system of accounting. And all the expenditures are subject to approval by management ship. So it's to be transparent and recorded in the minutes. There's not, any goes to that museum, other than that small discretionary thing that isn't recorded and isn't easily tracked back through the minutes. And they're attached to a reconciled bank statement and a trial balance and handed out each member of the new village at the meeting. So last month's records this month, they pass on. So we, you know, through those steps, we're confident that all transactions can be tracked. And banking information can be tied to the operation, so it keeps us closer to our budget lines. So that we're only, at any time, we're only a meeting away from correcting something that may have been a little bit skewed. So let's get to our bank statement. You guys got a copy of there, that's a January bank statement, greater change than it now, of an operational stuff, wages for less. And expenses as far as power and whatever else we pay over there. So our fundraiser balance is forty-nine thousand dollars. We were given twenty-five thousand dollars by the foundation, what we call directly to spending. We can't spend that on anything except some capital project that is beneficial to the village. And we don't want it, you know, but we haven't chosen. We've had ideas floated, but we haven't chosen that project yet. But that money's protected and we will not spend it as we were directed to. We have a shed project that's going on up there, we've got a quote score, it's got about around twelve thousand dollars. In actual fact, we have twelve thousand dollars of money in our account that we've nickled and dimed together in our fundraiser account. And that's the total sum of money available to us to spend and if I had our discretion. Now, we go to our business account and there's, at that point in time, there's twenty-three thousand dollars, it's less now. By the time we fire up and by the time our normal remittance from the village comes, that'll be, that account will be off closer down to zero. So when you balance that all out, you look at, we have twelve thousand dollars. That's actually our, we can spend it in whatever time scope you want. So, you know, the date of the receiving of funding isn't guaranteed. This last paragraph on your notes there is a pretty important one because I still go to that a little bit. But there's always, let's say that funding does turn a little quicker and we have a balance left in our account at the end of the year. That balance is brought into the budget for the next year so that it's used up. So like last year, we had a six thousand dollar over, we had six thousand dollars of your money that didn't get spent.
That was from previous...
We deducted it off a required amount for this year. So when you see that bumped up required amount, it actually was there last year. We've utilized that extra money by reducing a requirement from it. And then there was another item in there that we were to be paid for, but it never did happen. Of twenty-seven hundred dollars, which wasn't budgeted, we paid it. Your money, but we paid it. Because it was a shortfall in what we had applied for with our federal grant money that we get for students or for the workers in the summer. The amount that we normally applied for and was normally approved, we applied for that. The amount that got paid for was the same amount of people, but they reduced the hours allowed down to for forty hours, maybe thirty hours a week.
But didn't the village in mind gave you a staff member?
No, the village, no.
Who didn't pay for a staff member, a summer student?
No. We asked if we make up that twenty-seven hundred dollars. Never did happen, so we just paid for it.
Chris, can you answer that?
Yeah, our books are showing something different, Joe, because we exceeded our summer student balance and I was under the understanding that we were paying for one of the summer students over there.
Never happened that way. You know what? It happened that way.
You're here tonight, so now we can figure this out.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure we issued a payment.
Yeah. Yeah, because we had, our summer student budget for three summer students was thirty thousand and some change. And when the dust settled, sorry, you're on... Shoot, here, we're spending close to forty-two. And only, you know, and I remember a conversation at the beginning of the season with, I think it was Les. And we basically allocated one of the summer students over to you guys.
We only had two that worked for us, that worked there, there was never three.
I'm pretty sure we got a request at the end of July.
Yeah.
End of July, beginning of August, requesting us to pay. And I'm pretty sure we issued a check for it. So we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll check it out on our end too because I don't see as that was...
Yeah.
Do you need a motion put out?
Uh, no. No. Because, yeah, our budget for that summer student line for public works was thirty thousand four hundred and fifty-three and the final expenditure was forty-two. So that would suggest a fourth person on our books, so that may hold in the...
Yeah, well, I see with our treasurer selected that. Anyhow, folks, that's what...
Well said.
That sort of justifies where we are, what we do, what we do.
I have a question for you. I know Les is not like anymore meetings, so he's off. Okay, so when you hire a student for the summer, are they going to tourism meetings at all to promote? The reason why I'm asking, I went to a tourism thing on behalf of the village. And there was a young couple that had, from First Nations, they have a thing up the highway. And when we got talking what she offers and what we offer, she wasn't aware that Pus had all this. And I'm thinking, how do we get that information to you? Because it's fine for me to go, but I don't have the...
I'm good with most of that stuff. Some of it is a waste of our time, you know, and we've done that, we've been down that road.
Yes.
To where it's a waste of our time, follow through on some of that stuff. As long as they don't do good things, they aren't relevant to us. There's that part of it. There's a lesson, okay? Now, let's be realistic. He did an excellent job of what he did across the street here last year. But don't tell him short, he put in huge hours and he put in a bunch of time. Just let, hear me out, please. And, you know, kudos to him because he's selfless in that regard, you know? But on top of that workload, ask him, you know, and if we ask him nice, he probably will. But on top of that workload, to ask him to attend these meetings, you know? That's a hard sell.
Can one of the board members attend?
There are a lot of volunteers here, you know, and yes, a board ten, a member could attend if they choose to.
Yeah.
But we can't designate a board member to go to these meetings because they're all, you know, private people that are just coming and giving their time when they possibly can, you know?
Yeah, but the last time Sandy went and the village taxpayers had to pay for her to go. Because all of us have jobs, right, all of us can, aren't, aren't, you know?
I want to take back, I don't want it to say anything negative, but Les, no, Les, because his heart is in that museum. And I understand fully him saying, "I don't want to go to another meeting", that's just not his thing. He'd rather be where he is from under...
We understand the... The head person that he is. No, there is some better way to put it, we understand that. I don't want to push him beyond that because I don't want to detract from the good things that he does otherwise.
But what amongst...
If we, if we want to try a little harder to get people to go to these things, you picked the poison. Because to be honest, we haven't found too many of them that are helpful to us, you know?
Sandy? Share a question. The meeting we're talking about is called Northern Heritage Trail Society. And it's a group of museums that have gotten together to promote the Alaska Highway. It started with the seventy-fifth anniversary, we did a brochure. And really what it is, is this group comes together, they've not asked for any money from any of the communities, they raise all their money on their own, they get it through grants, through donations. But what they have done is they have, we created the auto tour brochure two years ago. This year, they've done a great big kiosk map that every museum's gonna get at no cost. And it points out all, points along the Alaska Highway. And there's a society with it...
Will we be on it?
Pardon?
Are we going to be on it?
We are on it.
We are on it.
Right now, I go to it.
Yes, but I mean, are we on the map?
Yes.
Because we're not part of the Alaska hunt?
Yes, you are.
It starts in Dawson, does it not?
No, it starts at the border.
New rules, I guess. I said the same thing.
They include everybody from right this way all the way up to Fort Nelson.
I know what's that, you know, there's been things like this. They had this one tour of museums all through the north, and you could get your stamp and...
Yeah, that was part of that too.
And it was a good thing in a sense, you know, and I talked to some people who did it. But already organized when we came on board, it was nothing, nothing that we had our hand in.
We didn't learn, were in there?
We didn't learn, went, but there was nothing we had our hand in as far as organizing, it was already done. We just went and followed up and got on board with it, but we didn't, we were in the planning stage of that. You know, we weren't really, you know, because I...
Means I intended everybody was asked to participate.
And, but, I mean, we were on the group, you know, with our museum as part of it.
And we got the eye for the museum too, didn't we?
Yeah.
So all these things are, all these things are possible. I have to agree that it would be nice to step up the fight and do all those things all these times.
Could we apply on behalf of you for some kind of grant to assist hiring somebody that would do that or... How can we...
Help you.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to agree that that's a good idea. And I sort of, I sort of agree that it's a good idea. But we've been down the grant trail, you know, in the past many times. Over about twenty years that I've been involved in this, we've been down that grant trail a few times. The workload, the paper load, by the time the end result is in on that, it's just overwhelming.
But you guys don't do the paperwork, Joe?
We have in the past, I'd be up for it if I were you.
We have a grant writer that the village hired. So you guys would say, "Okay, we know there's a grant for such and such, can you guys get your grant writer to find?"
And I'm quite happy with that, if the village wants to step up to that level, though.
That's where we're here from, that's why we're here, that's why we're here.
Because you don't have the people to have that.
And we're getting less and less, like, as we're hoping ahead, this involvement by people is gonna get diminished, you know?
But we would need your, like, we don't want to take anything away from the museum, so we need the museum's direction, what they want this person to attend and why they want to attend it. Maybe this ain't the only thing that you think is important. We need your, because we don't want to take over everything, but we want to assist and do what we can.
I mean, if you seriously think that it would help us without adding to the burden that we already have as far as operations...
We're trying to ease the burden, is what we're trying to do.
Give you help.
You're so well spoken, you're so well spoken. I'm enjoying listening to you.
You always was, museum saved my life.
What do you need? What do I need? What do you need?
Yeah, what is...
No, we're, we're, I can give you a wish list a mile long, but realistically, we don't need anything. We need that brown hook after over there.
Painting?
It would be nice if we had a nice office building so my wife wouldn't have to go there to sit in the cold while she's doing a few books up for this place.
So how do we guys still spend that twelve thousand dollars?
On the year, right?
Like, spend the money, like, tell us what we need, give us some of this.
No, we're not gonna spend money because it comes up in increments of time, you know, and all of a sudden, we need two thousand dollars or something. I don't want to be in a situation where we don't have that, you know? And when I say "I", I've been given the mandate by this, by the membership, you know, to sit here and... I've been given the mandate by this, by the membership, you know, to sit here in this position. And I don't want to, I don't want to, um, push it to where I'm loading on a lot.
So your next Wednesday night meeting, or your meeting, your next meeting, can you at least give us
More space?
Before our, yeah, give it to money. Give us you guys' wish list so that maybe we could possibly put it in the budget.
Or get some
Because we are in budget time right now. And that's what I was trying to get across to Les. We are in budget time now. We need you guys' stuff. We need to know. We need to know why you guys have this kind of money in the bank. We need to know. We need to work collaboration with you guys.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like you've said that, Larry, it sounds like you're not convinced that we, that that's why we have that money. And my, we had explained.
No, 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 no. I'm saying us. Give us your wish list, list to see if we can do the budget. If, if we have to add more to your money?
Yeah. You know, um, I think more capital, there's more capital costs than anything else that we, that we need.
Okay, like, like what?
Painting?
They need more space.
More space.
We need a, a good clean needed space.
So over there, you want that space?
I don't, I, I, I don't care where.
What about the old, what about the old hill crest? That's the old R C, the R C and P building, really.
The R C and P building is owned personally by a gentleman that lives here in Pooch. We're not tearing the building down. He has a rancher in there. We are, are working with him to have the cabins torn down. Those cabins are not fixable.
I understand that, but the bit, the office itself is the old R C and P.
Yes.
And should be designated as a, as a heritage building.
He does not want it as that. He's proud of the elements. Proud of the elements. There's nothing we can do. We've asked him if he wanted us to find him grant money for that building. He said no. He does not need bundles.
As long as it's not torn down.
We don't plan on torn, tearing it down.
Does the village own the post office building?
Yes.
You know? Putting property in behind it, I mean?
It's village property.
Yeah.
Can we expand our fence?
No, but I'm thinking that, you know, if there was a possibility, I suppose if there's an expansion possibility, that's the closest, almost under pressure one, that maybe a
So there's your wish list.
Warmer space.
There's your wish list.
Could be erected, you know.
I mean, what about, you know, you guys talking about expanding, going a little bit over towards the fire hall and putting proper door in there so that you can really know there, you know, because we have, it's always congested in there. When you walk in and out that door, the dust goes off.
Where's that? The main doors and
Very main?
The main door of the museum?
The main door. You know, when you look, if you walk down, all the way down there going to that gate, if you go in back towards the fire hall. Why can't we put a little bit of an extension there? And make the next entrance way, makes office work, the same thing.
We, I'm sure that all the council here is fully in agreeance with you guys?
But it's gotta look identical to
Exact.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't make it any different than
That's right.
Right?
It has to be identical.
So we would have to find somebody that does that kind of work? Whether the structure could take an addition?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're looking at probably some, some, uh, major problems when you start messing with that old building, you know. And I, I appreciate what Frank's saying because it's a horrible place in and out when you have a crowd, you know, because you're restricted to that one door. We tried many times to, to, uh, make it so they come in one door and rule out the other, but I mean, half of our clientele are children. So, so you have to give that little bit of a consideration there that they aren't going to deliver actually when you point them.
Like thirty cats. So there's your wish list?
Well, you know, that, that's an item, but, but we're talking very big bucks and I don't
But there is right now, um, Joe, at the N D I T, they have, uh, big community halls, museums, anything like that for N D I T have, have grants out there.
Well, I mean, if you, if you want to dedicate your grant writer to come to a meeting because they'll have some input. I believe they have some input as far as the approach to it.
Chris?
Yeah, your worship, I can reach out to the, to the grant writers and he typically works remotely.
Yeah, out of fourteen, Joe.
But he, he may be willing to come to a meeting, worst case scenario, Joe.
Scott?
Typically in these situations, I put him and, and the, the group directly in contact with each other rather than me or anybody else.
No, I can appreciate that.
You don't need a triangle.
Yeah, and there's a healthy budget for, for the grant writer that is exactly set up for that purpose so that you could be used by community groups for their, their benefit as well.
So just to be clear, have you been, have you accessed grants through this system?
Yeah.
You have?
Yes.
And who did the follow-up work?
Always Andy.
Always Andy?
Yeah.
I can buy that.
And they always pay, pay Sandy to do the grant writing. For any of we have. And that's why we are here with you guys, trying to figure out what your guys' wish list is. Trying to figure out exactly what you guys need from us. Because we, we know that the museum is the most important thing in the community. We know that. So as long as we can get it up and running and, well, how you guys want it, we don't want to cut your budget back. We just have questions.
That's cool. That's cool. And I, I
Oh, yeah, don't, don't get your
I hope I answer.
You did. Well, I have a few questions still. Um, you've got blank here, fundraising and supplies, and then you've got advertising and promotion. And you've only got two hundred dollars in your advertising and promotion.
Well, we found we do very much.
Pardon?
We, we don't do very much. We're included in your newsletter.
Yeah.
We're, we're, uh, basically a hard, our promotion is pretty limited because we don't need it.
Okay.
You know, so the sign on the frontier kind of covers it all.
So, Chris?
I can speak to that too, your worship. Uh, most of the village's advertising budget, um, not most, virtually all of it always contains either a photo or some reference to the, to the museum. So every publication that we do here from the village advertising standpoint, either economic development or tourism always has a museum focus in it as well.
Yeah, but the signs that they make for the floats?
That's all we have.
Where does that come from?
Just the float money there. And the fact
But there's no money in float, Joe. That's what I'm asking.
But, uh, the, the students are tasked with doing that. Les has his little discretionary budget there. He has to do some little thing. It's not like he, he doesn't spend on big items. So, so the twenty, thirty dollar piece of plywood or whatever, uh, you know. So they get, they get it done. This last year was excellent with the involvement of the students. We lose one of them this year, but one's coming back. Hopefully, hopefully that enthusiasm that they brought to the table last year will kind of reflect on the new person or persons.
Oh, okay.
So, so that's the way that people, that's the way that works is we don't You can't sit here, you know, and realistically, you can't, you could put a, a budget number on float, take five hundred dollars and make a float. You can do that. But you have no idea what you want to do by the time you make that budgetary decision. You have no idea because, because everybody's got input when it comes closer to the time.
Yeah, but you, in your two thousand eighteen actual, there's nothing in it. So that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, good point. I don't
Right? Like, how, how much is it gonna cost you guys to do all the floats? Like, how much does it roughly cost? Right? And then you got miscellaneous supplies. What's that for?
You say miscellaneous supplies? I don't know, paper clips.
Okay, but then you've got miscellaneous, total miscellaneous expense, sixteen hundred and thirty dollars.
That's the float.
That's a float. So float supplies. That's what I mean, right? Like, this is what I'm asking these questions for is because I have no idea.
I don't know what the sixteen hundred dollars represents, but, uh, I do know that, that, that there's a lot of supplies in that that go through the place that aren't designated to one, one thing. And I'm sure the total could get up there pretty easily over the course of the year. So can I answer you clearly? No. Do I accept the fact that it exists? Yes. You know, and I'm not, and I'm not driven one way or another. I'm just saying, to me, that makes sense that that's what happened, you know.
Okay. Any questions? Do you guys have any questions? There's a question. There is.
No, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't actually, you know, I came to reiterate what you folks already need. I don't think there's many things that I said that, that weren't common knowledge. The allocation of funds was, was maybe, maybe you weren't prepared for that, but, uh, but the rest of it is just stuff. You obviously know that that museum is, is an integral part of this community.
We do.
And, and you got a group of people who, who
Are dedicated to it.
Yeah, you know, who put it happening.
Yes.
I think too, you know, like, a lot of times when we got functions coming on, we don't see, you know, you guys come over to see what's actually going on over there. You know what we're doing. Most people, I see you this year, wanna do, doing some stuff, but very seldom, I don't see Bart, don't see anybody.
You saw me at the
I did see you, but very seldom do I see anybody come over just to see what's going on.
I've been over there during the day as I drop in here.
And I probably don't need that functions going on, you know.
But you know what, Frank? I have always laid out to Joe and Val, at Red and Carolyn, everybody, that if you give me a phone call and tell me you need me there, I will be there.
It's not a matter of meaning. It's just a matter of wanting to come over and see what's actually going on here, you know. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I
People don't need to be called to come over to see what's going on.
Yeah, no. Oh, I went over there. I checked it out. I was, on Les's
No, I'm not saying. I've seen you over there, but there's lots I haven't seen there.
Yeah.
And without, without stepping on Frank's toes, I see where he's going with this and it's, it's really a communications thing. It's hard for us to realize that, that you didn't know what was going on when there's very little involvement, you know.
Yeah, but we want, we want to be involved.
I get it. I get it. And I agree. But I see where Frank's coming from totally in that, that, you know, there's a communication gap there, but it's not on purpose. It's because we're doing what we do and you're doing what you do and, uh, sometimes they don't meet in the middle. I guess with both sides of that equation, you can improve that a little bit. Like I said, don't set the bar too high for us.
No, I don't plan on setting the bar too high. I know how high it can go. So thank you for coming tonight, you guys.
Okay, thanks for hearing us.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I want to see your wish list. Okay? Can you make that happen, Ben? Can you steer these hats into making the wish list?
The biggest thing we need is space, like Joe said, office space.
Yeah.
So it's not done in the museum itself, so that area can be used as a museum, not an office. Someplace to store all the stuff.
I agree. So, Chris, is there anything possibly that we can do before we finalize the budget for that?
Um, I would say at this point, your worship, just being so close to budget finalizing, you know, but we know we've got a lot of potential expansion projects on the horizon. The fire hall expansion, we discussed, there's some work around the old library and, and other things that have been thrown out sort of conceptually over the last couple of months. Knowing this now, we can certainly look at, at, uh, maybe some office space into those plans. Won't happen overnight because, you know, those programs are covered.
Chris, it has to happen overnight, you know.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you.
See you at your next meeting.
All right, group. It is new business recommendation.
Council received budget proposal for general government environmental help, public health, and welfare in my previous report.
Can I get a second here? Second. Any discussion on this? Chris is gonna give us a
On that, your worship, no, there's nothing really past what's in the report. I included all the information, including bullet points of what council's, uh, request and changes were for, for the building.
Okay.
That should be ready to prove if you guys can put it as this.
Okay. We didn't have Bob Zimmert?
No, it's mine.
He has a council, isn't he?
I checked in there. Everybody all over? Have this one?
Yes.
And the next one, please. Recommendation, uh,
That council received budget proposal for public works, waterfront, and sewer fund for discussion.
Do you want to speak to this one, Chris?
Yeah.
Oh, can I go center here? Second.
So this one, I've definitely, uh, got my PowerPoint.
Oh, Chris.
For everybody. It's so short. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. These aren't the sexiest parts of the village's operation, which is a public works and sewer.
That's the most interesting.
Thank you, Ben.
Oh, attending one of the timing of this, I think, so I'm, I'm looking at it.
It starts now.
So agenda for this, yeah, we're gonna start with Public Works, uh, then the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund will be the three areas of discussion tonight. Once we get through these, we've actually gone through all of the expense and expenditure side of the budget. So then we're in the, in the river. Uh, so Public Works, Public Works, generally speaking, consists of wages and benefits, uh, Public Works building, uh, fuel, streetlights, and then streets and lanes, repairs and maintenance for the mall park. Uh, budget versus actual, so we came in under budget in this category. Last year, we planned on spending about four hundred and ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand really. And, uh, unaudited number as of, uh, middle of February, when I pulled that last trial balance, was, uh, four hundred and seventy-three thousand. We finished on the right side of the equation in that category last year too. This year, um, there's a little bit of an increase, one point three percent. Uh, so the proposed budget number is five hundred and three thousand five eighty-five. And, uh, yeah, it's one point three over twelve thousand and eight's number. This is the public work section, uh, line by line. So again, not a huge increase, but mostly overseas and a couple of little, uh, transactional areas. The big ones, uh, being, uh,
The streetlights?
Yeah, no, not streetlights, your worship. The repairs and maintenance for the equipment. Then down here versus, uh, streets and lanes. I moved to put the loader expense, the loader rental into that streets and lanes. So we've removed ten thousand from equipment and maintenance, thinking we wouldn't have to be equipping as much into the grader, of course, if we're not using it. And then I out this, uh, so the loader, um, the total cost right now is four thousand dollars a month.
Oh, we're not keeping it?
The loader? No.
Just for the winter?
It'll just be for the winter months. And John Deere's already committed that they would look at that loader cost. And if we didn't use the hundred hours we were paying for, they suggested, they haven't committed, that they suggested they may be willing to offer us some type of credit towards that use as well. So they're really willing to work with us, so
Well, it's to their advantage.
Yeah, and the potential is that it, it could get a little cheaper, so, uh, um, yeah, so if that, if that, if we, if we
Did we figure out what we're going to do for salt? Do we know anything about CRS? Or do we have any
Haven't had anything yet.
Funds put there in case?
We've got that, uh, that sand storage shed on the, on the capital project list, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're not, the direction from you guys too is to not go ahead of that.
Yeah, no.
So it doesn't go in here?
No.
No, okay.
This is just the operating side, so
Okay, because we need, need sand to go by from CRS.
And, well, right now, yeah, but if
And it's been like that with Public Works. It was like that with the government.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it'll be with the next person.
There's no, there's no, yeah, and that's the, that's the piece we're unsure about, your worship. If for any reason CRS isn't the, the, you know, preferred contractor and gets the bid again, we could find ourselves where a new company managing it decides that they don't want to have a central office here and abandons that site. CRS may not sell it to them. We just don't know. So we put that in there just as a, as a just in case. Because if for any reason the road clearing piece here moves out of our backyard, then we're either going to go a good distance to buy and source sand or figure out some kind of plan B.
So on the rural tax road, who actually owns that building?
CRS.
CRS.
I don't know. Yeah, I believe it's CRS.
It is CRS.
Yeah.
They bought from Peace Country Maintenance. Peace Country Maintenance bought from the government.
Yeah, well, I was told the government owns it and they rent it from the
No. It's hard to see.
I could take a look for it tomorrow.
So, now the grader was, was thirty years old, right? Like, it was purchased when I was on council.
It's a ninety
So that's in the nineties, right?
Yeah, nineteen ninety-four.
I'm older than ninety-four. I'm retarded.
It was purchased when I was on council.
Hmm?
It was purchased when I was on council in ninety-four.
Yeah, it was just when we were, we were stepping out there. So, um, anyway, Yeah, it was just when we were, we were stepping out there, so, um, anyway, how much did we pay for that? Do you remember?
No. Two hundred and fifty dollars dollars now.
No.
I can't, no.
The size and class that we've got right now is three fifty.
And you wouldn't have had a fair share then.
So if you take thirty years, or whatever it is, thirty-five years, put out that amount of money for leasing something.
Oh, no.
So the advantages and disadvantages there, Councilor Hubert, are, and the reason we're thinking leases so we specifically don't find ourselves in a situation where fifteen or twenty years from now, we've got a piece of equipment that's old, outdated, and needs big repairs. The advantages of a, if you, if you take, let's say, two fifty, or even three hundred, and over that long-term period that you're talking about, we're looking at about twenty-five to thirty thousand a year at most to rent, you know, the, the piece of equipment that we need for the snow clearing over the winter. That is basically, you know, on a yearly basis over a long span, what we would end up paying to buy a piece of equipment, the advantage is every season, we have a brand new machine that has zero maintenance cost.
And we also did this because we were test driving the loader, to see if the loader actually would work.
Yeah.
Versus the grader, what would be cheaper, what would be.
Yeah, so then you don't have something sitting in the yard that's deteriorating, we've gotta find space to shelter it and cover it, it's.
And if we have a grader, we.
Here's my headspace, is that right now we're getting, um, fair share money, right? So, take away the fair share money, and we're leasing a loader, plus we have to try and afford our, our union people, plus we have to afford.
Only using this, this, we're only using this loader for four months of the year, four or five months of the year, for the winter. We still have our grader.
We're still, yeah, the plan is to.
You're still gonna have the grader.
Yeah.
Okay.
For now, at least until we absolutely know where the motor, the transmission, or something heavy duty lets go, that we just, it becomes completely.
I think we bought the grader.
I think we bought the grader.
To, to give you an idea, a lot of municipalities are starting to adopt policies through council and their equipment replacement policies, and generally they're set up as five to seven years, and it's to prevent that kind of situation from, from happening. This is, this is something we quite really should have looked at fifteen years ago, once that piece of equipment hit fifteen years old, somebody should have had a discussion with council and said, it's time to look at replacing this thing, or.
Well, I'm a little fash, 'cause I know that when I lease something, it isn't mine at the end of it, I wanna know that I own it and that, by God, oh my gosh, it's gonna be there for me, that's all.
And, and it's just a concept too, it's not etched in stone, so we can do this for a couple of years and, and see how it works, and then.
Yeah.
Then, um, my personal feeling on it is this is the way to go, just because cost benefit ratio, this is what we would be spending over that year to buy it, I mean, already on this loader, we've blown two hydraulic hoses on it just in the course of our operations, we called John Deere, yeah, come in and fix that, as it costs us a dime, the two hundred and fifty dollar hoses.
Oh, so if we have a grader, we have to have an operator with a whatever, but with this piece of equipment?
Yeah.
We don't.
If you have to have operators, it must be that guy who does.
Ken, you have to have a grader and roller operator with a license?
Nope.
And that was, yeah, Councilor Smith's right on, part of the concept with the loader over the grader was because we thought maybe, the original conversation was to, was to buy something, to replace this piece of equipment with, you know, something that we'd had for, for a number of years. Um, and we started talking loader as an alternative to a grader, so that if we were gonna buy it, have it sitting on the yard, at least it could do something for us over the summers, we thought. We were gonna get a set of pallet forks, and we did, so that the loader can unload culverts and that stuff, 'cause our backhoe was kinda clumsy for it, and so on and so forth, but then we really, we sat back and we talked about it, and we said, well, we're making this decision because we're trying to find something to use it for, at the end of the day, we need this thing for the winter, period, that, that's it. It's just to plow the streets, and, and we're gonna scratch our heads to try and find uses for it in the summer, but we really don't need to, we're forcing ourselves to do that, so why don't we actually look at the window of time that we need, and how would make that work? But then also in the course of that conversation with, with Blair, the subject of our, our senior operator came up, and he's close to retirement, you know, he's, he's, he's been with the village a long time, he does great work for us, he's, he's a very skilled, you know, grader operator, but therein lies the issue. So our grader folks are several dollars an hour less than oilfield grader folks, so if, if we replace a grader with a grader, then when we go to replace Bud as an employee, we're not looking for this nice, well-rounded public works employee that can do water and roads and all of this other stuff. Our primary and only concern on a job application is can you operate a grader safely in a residential neighborhood? Because we can't find a construction guy with a plumber, somebody, trade person with all of that experience. And put him on a three hundred thousand dollar giant tank and have him weed through, you know, if he, if he hasn't done that for a number of years, we're, we're setting ourselves up for a problem, so then, we're, we're foregoing all of those other skills to find somebody who's a grader operator first and foremost, and hope that they can come to the table with some of that other stuff.
And you need for.
If it's all need for the, then why don't we just sub it out?
That's, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's come up too, Ken.
That's another way.
We're done?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, and therein lies the other thing, right, even when we did the, the, the lease negotiation with John Deere, I had to fight to get a hundred hours, because their leases typically start at two hundred and go up, so this had to go to management to get a special price for us to even arrive at this, and right now, we're not even using it for a hundred hours, so you're, you, you may be on to something too, that, that conversation has happened internally, that why don't we just find somebody with a grader, or whatever?
But what do we do with, uh, the public works, what are you saying?
Well, we'd still have the employee, because that, you know, doing those snow clearing operations to actually clear the streets, they're such a small portion of the, their total monthly time in the winter, it's just, you know, takes twelve, fifteen hours to do the whole town.
Or, you would really have to guarantee that person, because when you need a grader, so does everybody else need a grader.
Correct, yeah.
So, you know what I mean, you'd have to pay a little bit more to keep him on call. I know a contractor, he would just give us a delegation, he owns graders.
Well, are you suggesting contract with the whole machine and everything, Ken, 'cause that's what we talked about internally, like, we find somebody with a grader and put them on call and say, when we need you for snow clearing, come in and do the roads. Yeah. Yeah.
We have nodes right up the street?
Yeah, I think that's an awesome concept, the only thing to echo Barb's concerns is if in a major, major snowfall, they're gonna be deployed doing whatever they're doing, and, you know, can we meet the same level of snow clearing time commitment that we do right now with somebody on call, who we may not be their first priority?
Um, if we have somebody dedicated in a contract with them, they will be, put us first.
So.
It's certainly worth exploring.
Yeah, and they've been dedicated. We talked about that.
So is that something you guys would like me to explore through the summer here, and see if I can, because we're, we're returning this loader in another month and a half, and we've got the entire summer to come up with a game plan for, for next winter, and that's certainly something I can explore if you guys want me to look into that.
We want it just to make fun happy, that's what we're into.
Do you need lotion for that?
Keep them around for all.
So, looking to contract, because it's, it's entirely possible that that would end up even cheaper still, and still meet the objective, 'cause I mean, the grader's probably about two hundred bucks an hour, maybe two fifty, but, you know, a skilled grader operator can, can blitz the entire town in, in eight to ten hours, have everything done, and then we just use the, the backhoe for the little bit of cleanup and, and stuff afterwards, so we're maybe.
In that contract it has to state, do not leave snow at the end of the mayor's driveway, 'cause she will go sideways.
Go sideways trying to.
The workers were backing on.
Hey, hey, Chris?
No, don't you dare. Don't you dare.
Is, is that considered a psychosocial habit?
Exactly, but stuck your bike, okay, run away, that's why you have a big truck, I had to go out of his open door, my phone would say, excuse me.
So, yeah, yeah, it would have to be a grader with the snow mean bucket thing, but.
Yes.
Okay, well, next we call, that, uh, that's definitely a distinct possibility, so. Uh, back to all of the, Schmaler's board are numbered, um, really, not a lot's changed in there, folks, if you see from, you know, these are the unaudited actuals. Um, one thing you'll note, I left the insurance line where it was, because that does include some of the insurance costs for the appraisal on, on that building, so I'm thinking it will, it will come down a little bit this year, but might have to make a small adjustment for that next year. Um, yeah.
It looks good to me.
That's basically it, so, uh, comparing it to our base year that I've been working off, we are a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars higher in public works than we were in base year, and that is, uh, mostly due to repairs and maintenance GL back in two thousand and sixteen, that was only thirty thousand, and we just kept seeing the repair costs going up and up and up, so we're adding ten grand to our two thousand.
So did we actually put money aside though, Chris, for that grader to be fixed, some of the issues that we had with it?
Um, no, generally those type of repairs just come out of the, the equipment repairs and maintenance GL, so, so we budgeted for seventy-five, which was our highest repairs and maintenance year ever for our equipment, and we hit seventy-three, so this cost, like I say, four years ago, was, was at thirty.
Yeah, there's the motor or something, what's wrong with the grader, what was wrong?
Uh, right now it needs a complete front end rebuild, multiple seals and hoses, I believe there's a transmission seal on it that's let go, uh.
So the sixty-five thousand dollars is not gonna cover that?
Um, we're, the estimate for the grader repairs right now, to do everything it needs to make it as operationally perfect as a thirty-year-old machine can be, was about forty thousand bucks. But that's it, those aren't required repairs, if it just becomes a piece of machinery to sit in the public here, it works great, I'll grade the alleys two, three times a year, we can, we can get by with it, although we've had to do the front end work, 'cause Bud was staying, literally was having trouble steering it, but a lot of that other stuff just becomes, you know, the, the issue with the grader and those types of repairs is that, you know, I mean, the public is paying through taxation for a level of service with respect to snow clearing, you know, we're coming to the table with a thirty-year-old machine with bearings and bushings and leaks and old stuff all over the place.
But I don't want it leaking on the streets, I don't want it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, 'cause it just needs pavement.
And inevitably, right now, it's gonna fail at some point, we're gonna get stuck in a major snowstorm, and we won't have a plan B, so, you know, that's, that was, that was a good, this.
Throw a coat of paint on it, takes the option.
The potential, I would say.
Yeah, potentially, you know, and then, yeah, so just to finish off that thought, the other, the other lining here was the summer stables, back in two thousand and sixteen, we had no allocation for, for summer stables, so. Any questions there, folks?
Yeah.
On to water fund, uh, as the name implies, water and water delivery system, uh, you'll notice both the water fund and the sewer fund are labeled funds, and what that means is that, you know, fund accounting applies to those two areas of the budget. So, the water has to be revenue and expense neutral, and you'll see it in the, in the budget document, we've got to account for both revenue and expenses inside both the water and sewer fund, so that's why, uh, the separate notation. Uh, budget versus actual, water fund was under budget by seventy-one thousand, sounds really big, but the reason for that is we've got large contingencies inside the water and sewer repair bu, uh, budgets for repairs, if nothing major fails, everybody sees kumbaya, we ended up under budget at the end of the year. Um, so, yeah, it looks a little, looks a little better than it actually was, that, uh, that just as good as. Uh, we're forecasting a small increase in the water budget here again for, for twenty eighteen, um, and it's mainly due to small increases in multiple areas, nothing was really out of whack. I will apologize here, guys, there was something going on with my Excel spreadsheets, the lines, I couldn't get it to print properly.
So, Chris, if, if Dawson reopens up the, um, contract for the water.
Yeah.
Is that allocated in there?
No, just because that's uncertain at this point, we've got no.
Well, Dawson, not Dawson, people, people pay what, two dollars and sixty cents, uh?
I don't remember, it was off the top of my head, worship, I know that our, our per cubic meter water cost right now is supposed to be the same, um, there may be some discrepancies in other costs that they're levying, apparently there's some type of infrastructure charge, um, that doesn't flow through the, so we're just paying for the water itself, not the, the lines.
Well, 'cause that line's ours, Dawson, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
But I think we should have maybe that put in there, because I know that Dawson wants to put, open up, so we should maybe.
For this year, you worship, I'd say it would definitely absorb it, just because we're so far under the budget every year, so, yeah, yeah, and if something like that happens, and we saw a spike in, you know, through contractual negotiations, I mean, it's explainable in the, in the budget, so, but I haven't seen any kind of numbers on that right now, and what would we put in there, five, ten, fifteen, twenty? We know it's potential, we might as well just leave it as a.
Um, you got fire department sales, that one, that's just, you have a back for the fire department, yeah? Yeah, we're down here, um, so have we put money aside for, um, Blair's office upstairs? Right?
In, uh.
Firewall?
No, no, that should have, that should have been part of the fire department budget.
But we've already passed the fire.
We've already passed that.
Budget, so. So maybe we should.
Don't, I'll have to bring an adjustment forward in the final, uh, the final, you guys still have three final readings of the all, so the total budget package, so if there's any adjustments to be made between now and then, I'll put them and highlight them in that, that final budget package.
'Cause, um, you guys, obviously you have, are wondering what I'm talking about, um, I had, um, the staff sergeant come to the office, um, what, last week, the last one?
Yeah, I think so.
And, uh, he wants a support letter stating that, um, if he sends out a member here every day, can, do we have space for him? So I got Chris to email Blair to see if we can give up Blair's office in the fire hall and Blair move upstairs, and we'll have community police email here, full time.
Is there a room upstairs open?
Blair said there was.
Blair said it's not as ideal as the office he has now, but he can make it work for, for the time, for the time being.
So that's why I'm asking for that, and if you guys totally agree with, uh, an officer out here, one-four-seven, with them dealing with the rural area too, no cost to us?
I'm just gonna say.
Can I make sure there was no cost to us?
Well, we all have to pay, please, they know, we.
We do.
Yeah.
So if you guys are in agreements with that, then we can have money put into the budget.
What about looking with Blair?
Uh, yeah, we can, Blair, and, uh, we have to have a letter of support for that.
I won't, I won't sugarcoat it, he doesn't, doesn't love the idea, we're gonna be making the space work, but he was.
He's gonna be at one of the councils upstairs?
Eh, yeah, essentially that's what we'd be converting into it, although, he doesn't spend a ton of time over in the, the office, and if he does need that space, eventually we can easily give him some desk space here in town halls.
I make a motion that we send him doughnuts once a month. What about the letter? I make a motion that we, uh, send a letter to the staff sergeant agreeing that we have space for him.
Yeah, can they afford? Can they afford?
Yeah, the rural policing.
Rural?
Yeah, yeah, oh, I was working on this, Dawson.
Well, I thought that they were dead.
That's not our problem, is it, but we're making sure that we do have policing out here, for that simple reason, if they do cut back those streets, I'm making sure that we have somebody here. Who's seconding it? Donovan.
I'm, I'm.
Long Fair.
No, that was quite an interesting read about, uh, the problem stepping in and ensuring that the appropriate number of officers were, where they were required to be. Thank you.
I missed that, what was that? The squall, squall?
The squall.
Squall, and what's it, the town, the night?
It was a Victorian.
Victorian, one of the towns decided that they were gonna cut back the police too, and, uh, they said, ah, they've gotta be up to a certain amount.
Conservative people, the population.
So I've been working on this with Damian since before Christmas, and, uh, he said he would do a business case study, um, but it might take a while, and I said, well, what about if we have space for you? And he said, well, that can make that probably work faster, and I said, well, then I'll let you know. What happens when they get a sick person or something, medical or lean?
Every day something.
They bump them.
Doesn't matter.
That, I, what I'm saying, well, previously, they've been pulling from the rural and moving them into the municipal, and we've been two down on the rural end of it for, what, year, year and a half?
Yeah.
And now they just got back, and now they're talking about cutting here, them out, so, so I figured, well, this is the best time, if they're gonna cut back the three, let's make sure we have one stationed here to be able to deal with the rural areas and.
I thi, I think that's incredible, I mean, I think we have to jump at that opportunity. I think, I think that's incredible, I mean, I think we have to jump at that opportunity.
Yeah, especially for school zone.
Blair basically felt the same way, I guess, you know, so when I, when I approached that subject with him, he says, "If I can move upstairs, then maybe offices are happening down, all for that," so...
So we're all in favor for that, Larry? Good.
Very good, um, yeah, far from. Uh, eighty-five hundred bucks above what it was in two thousand and sixteen, so we're certainly not seeing, uh, any dramatic change in, in cost there here.
Was there any major leaks or anything last year?
We did have a couple of leaks, uh, but nothing, no, nothing quite...
We know where they confirmed them, wouldn't they? One building in particular.
Yeah. Yeah. And even that, 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 that's not a cost that we end up burying from, from a repair standpoint, it, it gets charged right back.
It went through the meter, so...
Yeah, right through the meter, it goes back to the individual.
Still, it's wasted water.
Yeah. It's unfortunate that it's happening, but, um, yeah.
They need to live on a search, that's just...
Huh?
Yeah.
They need to live on a system.
Is there money in reserves for any kind of major repairs? Yeah?
We do have a water reserve, uh, I don't know the balance of that off the top of my head, Councilor Hebert, it's not tremendous though, um, but I know, you know, I'm just looking at the reserve accounts today for some interest allocation, but...
We've budgeted twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five to put in there.
To go there, yeah.
But you didn't put in what was in there before?
No, no, I didn't, uh, I didn't think to put the actual reserve balance in there, but, um, I mean, we've got five point two million in cash, which is in my head right now, so, and in the case of infrastructure... No, I was, and that's it, I was just gonna say, a lot of times, if, if something major like that goes from a water sewer standpoint, a lot of the municipalities look to MFA and, and get it financed over a number of years, so. We had something major fail from a water infrastructure standpoint that was gonna cost us two and a half million dollars tomorrow, I wouldn't advise council to empty out half of our, our bank account balances and...
I'd rather have the reserves though, to be able to, than actually financing it. And I don't wanna raise the taxes because we, you know, don't have any reserves, right?
Exactly.
I mean, it's, I mean, if we decide to raise the taxes because it's something we have to do, well, that's different, but because we've had a crash, right?
So out of that, you know, out of that five million, let's say, on the, on the financial statements from two thousand and seventeen, about two point four was in the general operating fund, the rest was all split amongst the, the various reserve accounts, so. I can bring a report back to you guys if you wanna see all the reserve balance.
The...
Actually, no, it'll be in the audit, there's, there's a page in the audit that highlights all of the reserve balance, you'll see.
Okay, it does.
Yeah, so, um, and then that'll be the audit and final, this is the reserve balance number, interest and everything included, so, yeah. Uh, any other questions, ladies?
No, good.
Sewer Fund, uh, probably the unsexiest of the whole one.
Downhill.
It's a sewer, sewer drainage systems, also set up as a fund identical to the, to the Water Fund, uh, forecasted increase of a hundred and ten thousand seven oh five for twenty eighteen, and that's partly due to council's direction to allocate the hundred thousand a year to the reserve fund, and then the other ten thousand change is basically just incremental increases.
Um, Chris, what about that, um, outflow meter? Should that not be on him?
Uh, no, that's a capital project. Oh, sorry, the outflow or the inflow meter?
Inflow meter, that one that we were putting in for a hundred and whatever?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's a separate capital project. I did also get a quote, and I mentioned it to you guys on last week's, uh, CEO report there too, I found, I found a new discharge meter for us. It turns out it's really similar to what we're planning on installing on the outflow side of the, the sewer thing, it's about the same, same unit, um, and that's about seventy-nine hundred bucks. And then specifically, though, that kind of stuff goes into, um, here. So we've got healthy balances for the sewer repairs and, and maintenance. Mostly every year when we see these, these funds consistently under budget, it's because nothing's been drawn out here, nothing's blown up that we've had to repair. The year that happens, we'll see one of these funds just go way off the deep end in terms of, of its inexperience.
So engineering costs, that was already paid last year for urban systems to tell us that we need to do the outflow meter?
Um, that engineering costs, and so what I've done with all of these various sections, your worship, is I've included everything that's in there from a GL standpoint. So you'll notice, yeah, there's a few, you know, that are, that are empty and not in there, unused, this is probably an old GL from God knows when, that we're just not using anymore, so, but it is part of the sequence in there, so nothing budgeted for it.
Perfect.
We're paying a buck in twenty twenty-three. No, yeah. There's luck in it, we're projecting it way out.
Prices going down.
And when up.
I'm thinking there's a rounding error in my formula, so, all fixed in the panel. Leave it the minute I...
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, and then this was the line, uh, the transfer to sewer reserve, so we already had some money going in there, and then a hundred thousand, uh, hundred thousand going in.
Just refresh me, in the spring, we have to monitor the overflow from the sewer, right?
Uh, not the overflow, Councilor Smith, we have to report to the province what our total discharge from the sewer lagoon, the final settling pond, into the river is, and that's a statutory requirement, and we literally gotta tell the province how much we put in the river.
Okay, is that extra cost to us? Or is that like, I know previous years we've had to get somebody in to do samples, and dig out, or, you know, whatever.
But isn't there a meter in there, Chris, now?
There, well, there is a discharge meter, and that's the one we've had for the longest time, the last two, the last two years though, it hasn't reported correctly, so that's when we started getting a sense that, eh, it was, it was starting to fail and malfunction. So the last two years that we've sent the report into the province, we've estimated the discharge, so we, we're only gonna be allowed to do that for so long, so...
So we're actually changing that meter at the same time as we do the install?
Uh, if you guys approve this budget, I'm gonna order that meter right away, yeah, and we can install that one, so Public Works took the old meter off, so we can put the new, the new meter on, um, because it's all there, we just gotta connect the actual process to connect.
Do you just want this one approved tonight, this sewer and water one?
Um, well, this is just the first, the first round, so, yeah, just for discussion and any changes and...
I can see Austin's headline.
Community wants sewer?
Down is a sewer.
Sewer meter crap, so...
Are engineers on sewer?
He goes, he goes, "Bobby's shaving stuff, you need to get it in."
He got really good engineers.
I was trying to cut coffee that way.
And like I said, we look at the amount we're under budget, we planned on spending one eighty-nine, we ended up at ninety-three, but out of eighty thousand dollars, we spent eleven in, in repairs and stuff, so...
Oh, yes.
Chances are, I mean, really to shrink these, I could take these two GLs and turn